Call the June 20, 2016 regular school committee meeting to order at seven o'clock. This meeting is both, is being both video and audio taped by Elcat. Is anyone else recording in any manner? Okay. If not, we will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call starting from my left. Gregory Thompson.
Georgie Mayew.
Rich Faschero.
Bill Fonseca.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Kathy Salati, the card secretary.
And just as a note, Beth is not with us tonight. Her and her family are taking a well-deserved vacation. Item two, item 2.1, approval of the June 6, 2016 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve June 6, 2016, regular session meeting minutes.
Your second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You need items. Very nice. Twenty and subcommittee, committee communications. Greg, we're all set tonight, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Rich?
Just a nice end of the year recognition ceremony to Joyce Kyle and Angie Corliss, who both play in the Hall of Fame. So, that was a nice way to, nice ending to this school year.
Okay, last week I was in Washington DC for the NSBA Equity Symposium and advocacy conference. The Equity Symposium was held Saturday. It was a very well put together event. Just, the theme was, you know, you treat everybody equally. And it's, it's, this is gaining some momentum throughout the country. As a matter of fact, at an MASC board, Board of Directors meeting last Wednesday, and MASC has been approached by Comcast and they're willing to sponsor an Equity Symposium in the eastern part of the state, possibly sometime early fall. So, keep everybody updated on that. The advocacy part of the conference was Sunday and Monday, primarily focusing on the new Every Student Succeeds Act. And Tuesday, we visited the Massachusetts delegation, congressional delegation at Capitol Hill. Very good conference, they did a good job, so. Looking forward to the next one. Okay. Moving along to item four, opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Seeing none, we will move on to item five, presentations. Superintendent's report, 5.1, point one, district-wide end of the year presentation.
We have our leadership team here this evening. We'll invite them up and get ourselves set up on the screens, but in your packets and on your iPads, you have our presentation of our annual progress, based on our SMART goals, and hopefully will give you some very good insight into what went on in all our schools this school year. So, does everybody have either the slides in their packet or? Okay, great. So, just taking, just a quick look, what this basically is attached to is not only our theory of action, where we're looking to consistently strengthen our core instruction and keep that within an environment that's safe and nurturing. And if we do that, we feel, and do that well, we feel that we will be preparing our students to gain 21st century skills throughout their time from pre-K through grade 12, which gives them strong communication skills, the ability to work collaboratively, think critically, and problem solve. What we set it up at the mid-year was, we put a couple of the first two goals, because they're linked so closely together, the two district SMART goals, and so you'll see that both goals mentioned, and then we'll go into the evidence. First SMART goal deals with making sure that we continue to look at our curriculum and be sure, or ensure, that we have standards-based, we're providing standards-based instruction that is aligned with the mass curriculum frameworks, and that we are providing those opportunities for 21st century learning skill development. Goal number two has been one that has had a very consistent focus over the last two, and this would be the third year, where we're developing our common assessments to also align with our curriculum frameworks, but probably more importantly, to develop a system of common assessments throughout the district that allows us to get formative assessment information on our students quicker, to help us inform our instructional plans throughout the school year.
So, we're just going to talk about a couple of overarching action steps that were taken and where we are with those one and two. The schools are going to go into more detail around how they worked on these individually. First of all, we continue to work on our curriculum and strengthen it, and the results are showing in STAR. Currently, 81% are above or at the benchmark in ELA, and 88.5% are at or above in math, as measured on STAR. It's important to remember that STAR is designed as a universal screener, it's norm-referenced, so the scores are in comparison to other students and not our own growth from one to the next, unless you look at certain reports. These are based on percentile, percentile scores, so it is that norm-referenced measure. All schools have used their common assessments in the content areas to drive instructional decisions, and they've had time to meet together and kind of look at that, and we continue to refine our common assessments. You'll hear a little bit about that from some of the buildings. And then, we're really looking forward, Gordon kind of alluded to it, that this is going to become much more easy for us to do, once we are implementing Mastery Connect, because we'll be able to have standards-level data, item analysis-level data, that are in the teacher's hands immediately. And for us, that's really what the data is important for, really, it's important to gauge where we are, but the most important use of our data is in the hands of teachers, who are then using it to inform instruction. This year, we provided the K-5 curriculum. With the curriculum change, we provided professional development. Here, you can see where we had three professional development days that were devoted to supporting math. This year was the first year that our 3-5 math coach was shared between the two buildings. She made wonderful strides working with the teachers and building relationships this year, a really good start to her collaboration with staff. And then, department head meetings, K-5 department heads meet monthly, and we dedicated that time to sharing instructional practices based on math. So, every meeting that we had, we had a volunteer who shared and did kind of a model lesson for the rest of the group to see, hey, here's what a fluency exercise might look like in second grade, or here's what, here's how they're, how we're teaching fractions in fifth grade or third grade. So, that was a way that we kind of provided time for the department heads to practice, and then that filtered down into their grade level meetings as well.
Just a connected point with the budget that just recently passed, we'll be completing that coaching model, so we'll have a math coach hired this summer, which will, who will work at our youngest level. So, it's been a model that has been working, and this should allow us to complete it, at least at pre-K through eight.
Excuse me, you talked about percentiles versus percentages, so the 81 and the 88.5 are percentages of those who hit the benchmark. Is the benchmark established based on a percentile? Is that what you were referring to?
It's based on, it's based on, well, that's, yeah, they're kind of intertwined. There's your percentile ranked through all of the individuals in the districts who take the STAR assessment.
Right, but at some point, the benchmark is?
The benchmark is set by the system based on, yeah, and we can have some opportunity to change that. We haven't done that, and I won't be able to tell you exactly why, but when we first set up STAR, they mentioned not changing our percentage in that ranking. So, it's, right now, it's 40, 40% at or above is where they want you, 40% of students making a particular score.
Benchmark?
And the reason that we haven't changed it, because we would up it, is that then we're no longer norm-referenced. In other words, it's a norm-referenced assessment. If we're not being compared at the same percentage, then that change, changes our percentile rank, if that makes sense. So, it's, you have a certain percentage that you meet, and then they compare everyone who's taken the assessment, and now you're percentile ranked.
Right.
So, yes.
But the benchmark happens after the percentile rank?
This is the percentage of students who are at or above the benchmark.
When was the benchmark established?
The benchmark is established by STAR.
Not relative to the percentile?
Correct.
Okay. So, we know where the benchmark is going to be?
But your percentile is based on the percentage.
Of those who?
Who are above the benchmark.
At or above.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, here's a, just a little more information around what we're going to be doing with Mastery Connect, and that looks really small on the screen, so I'll just talk real quickly for you. The system has been selected, that was done with a collaborative, a few collaborative committees. We had over 40 staff members involved in some shape or form, either evaluating systems, narrowing down what we were going to pilot, and then we had a number of staff across all schools who were piloting the systems. We asked them to evaluate again. Their recommendations came back to a committee, who then made the final decision. So, we're pretty confident that Mastery Connect was the best overall system for us to select, for our needs. And again, that'll give us standards-level data beginning next year. We have a curriculum team who is in place right now, and their job is to create kind of the initial instructional infrastructure for staff. So, they are uploading or creating assessments in the system, as well as creating what Mastery Connect calls a curricular map, which is simply a scope and sequence of standards when they're taught throughout a course, that we can then tie to the standards on the assessments, so that the data makes sense for individual teachers.
Based on our own common assessments that we've developed in-house?
Correct.
So, you have to match the timing up?
So, what we want to make sure is that the standards are taught that are on that assessment. So, that's basically what the map does, is make sure all those standards are addressed there.
As long as by the end of the year, you've addressed all the standards, we go at the sequence that we decide internally, but you have to set it up to track that.
The way we're, the reason why we're setting it up is to, one, kind of support teachers to spend less time doing the nuts and bolts of setting up their trackers, and more around learning how to use the system for the instructional planning, and how do they access their data. So, we're giving them a little bit of a head start with that. Another reason is that we want to make sure that the standards that are on the assessments are in their trackers, and a tracker would look something like that, blue and green and yellow. If you can imagine that being, the blue are standards, and then each row would indicate a student and how they are doing on each of those standards. So, you're able to see classroom-based and then individual student-based, how am I doing on each of these standards? If I inadvertently set up a tracker and I delete some standards out of it, but then the district's assessment has those three standards I deleted, I won't be able to use that data, because it's not going to filter into my tracker at all. So, we're, we're doing the setup to make sure that they have all of the assessment information that they need.
Can you settle a dispute I had with my 12-year-old over the common assessment and its being used as part of students' grades?
12-year-olds are fun.
She's always right, too.
I have one of those at home, too.
Student grades and common, the common assessments being used as part of students' grades?
I'm not sure I know what the question is.
Are the results of the common assessments used in calculating grades for students?
So, we should be using all of our instructional data that we collect on a student over the year, both informal and formal, to determine grades. It's not one measure over another at those grade levels.
But common assessments are used.
Yeah, I would, you'd have to see, yes.
But my point, or my question to that is, because I thought it wasn't, because I thought our goal with the common assessment was so that we could pace our teachers on what they should be instructing, and so they are getting feedback on what they've instructed.
In order to not overtest those assessments at the place of other assessments.
Right.
So, there are times to like line up with the end of units, and times where there would have been assessments anyways.
Fair enough.
But we don't, what we don't tell them that the purpose is how much is women.
Well, and the purpose?
It's not much.
The purpose of assessment, yeah.
I won't admit it, well, I just didn't. I thought we didn't use common assessments.
At the high school, not all of our teachers use it as part of a graded assignment.
Not all, but it was qualified as a 12-year-old, yes.
But the purpose of the assessments across the board is so that we can make sound instructional decisions for those students. So, they count in that fashion, whether it's incorporated into the grade or not. I mean, at the 3-5 level, we specifically created next year's assessment, common assessment windows opposite, or not in alignment with our grading, because we didn't want teachers to heavily rely just on the common assessment, we wanted it to drive instructional purposes. They have other formative assessments and information that they're gathering on a daily basis, that can inform the grading.
Listen, what grade levels we're looking at for this Mastery Connect, is it pre-K through 12?
It is K through 12 right now. Pre-K is always an extra thing to think about.
And, you know, this data we have here, you can see the leadership team's creativity developing their own individual report. A year from now, because of Mastery Connect, we'll have a different report, will be much more aligned school to school?
You'll see, you'll see some different images.
That's what I'm asking, I'm asking, is it going to be much more aligned than it is now?
It can, if, yes, and then you may also see individual school data as well, on other measures that they want to show, the work.
No, I understand, I like to create activity, but it would help to kind of be a look at one type of template for all five schools.
We can go from a very simple, and there's a small graphic there where you see the 70%, and then there's the colors. We can do a linear look at the district on a whole for each content area, at what percentage of standards are at mastery or near mastery at that point in time. So, we can go, you know, pull it back and look broad that way, and you can drill down and look at individuals as well. So, we will obviously have conversations about what we bring, and what you find most meaningful, and what you want to look at for data as well. We'll inform what you see.
So, who enters all the data?
Teachers, and also the assessment, if it's a, it's basically how you, if you would grade your assessment on paper, you're now grading it in the system, and then it does the background work of now telling you where the student is on the standards you've assessed. Whereas, right now, we have to do that work by hand, and it's very time-consuming, and we don't have a lot of time, so it's not being done to the, we'd rather have teachers spend their time collaborating around instructional decisions, and not crunching the numbers, so to speak. So, this crunch the numbers.
So, you can look at individual students, and look at the class as a whole?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Yep. That was probably the best, some of the best part of the pilot, was that some of the teachers who were working on it really got vested in it, and started putting everything in, because it just gave them such a level of clarity on where students were, and how they were addressing those needs, so.
In addition to the common assessments, teachers can use this for their own formative assessments throughout the school year. So, they can start to have that kind of in-depth knowledge on assessments they've been using before, if they want to put them into the system.
Okay. Does anyone outside of the district have access to the data?
Not ours, we can lock it down. There is like a community, if you will, so you can share resources with other people who have Mastery Connect access as well. As far as our district assessments, those are locked in-house, they're just accessed by the district. And then, to go one further, they're not, they're not really assess, once they're in Mastery Connect, we have a window where we then make it accessible to the teachers, so they don't have it, they develop the assessments, they have it. But as far as when we administer it, it's in a set window of time.
Do we report to the state from Mastery Connect?
No.
So, the data is self-contained?
This is just for us, correct.
With us, or is it without?
It's web-based with Mastery Connect, but they have backup servers and everything's, they checked out, we did an infrastructure assessment as well, so not just instructional purposes, but how the data is maintained. We had Ryan Quimby in on the committee with us and asked some security questions.
If the student impact rating stays with us, this would be one of multiple avenues a teacher could use to bring that discussion to an evaluator. They could use the common assessments in Mastery Connect, you could use, have to use state assessments if that data's available for a teacher. We've also allowed people to use STAR, so this, it would be one of a few avenues a teacher can utilize to bring that information. But in terms of sharing how our individual students are, we don't share that great with the department.
Okay.
So, this is another data point, the one that you're most familiar with, because it's what we've had the longest. And so, this is how we've done an aggregate, grades 2 through 8 in STAR math and in ELA. From the fall is the red bar, to the spring, which is the blue bar. In math, it went from 87 to 88.5% at or above the benchmark, and then in ELA, it was 74% to 81% at or above the benchmark.
You'll start to see that broken down by schools, but that's the aggregate for all students, grades 2 through 8. Now, we'll start hearing from the schools.
Okay.
Meadowbrooks first up?
So, I just want to start off by saying that the teachers at Meadowbrook have worked so incredibly hard at improving the core instruction at our building, and this is just evidence of it. So, what you see here is the second grade spring reading and math STAR data, and this is a percentage of students that have met proficiency and above, and advanced. So, you could see in 213, where we were in reading, was it 71% at the end of, you know, second grade, 71% of students were at or above, and this year, we're at 89. Same for math, it's just so exciting. Last year, we were at 80, we're at 89% proficiency. So, we are really, really excited about the growth that we're seeing. And I think that a big part of it is just, it's been the systematic focus that we've had on balanced literacy, with reading workshop, with writing workshop. This year, we did focus on language word study, and then math, I know Val spoke to it as well. We have a new math program, so we did provide full-day professional development, our half-days as well, we use a lot of that time to collaborate, and we also got a consultant from BU to come in and work with the teachers' half-day as well. So, they have just worked so very hard, and these are the results.
So, just take some breaks, dive down a little bit further in STAR reading and STAR math. One of the interesting things that kind of stuck out to me is where we began the year this year for reading was at 76% proficient, and math was at 71% proficient, which is where we were ending the year four years ago. So, that just kind of speaks volumes in and of itself. From that, 76% proficient or advanced in reading, we brought that up to 89%, which is a growth of 13% over the course of the school year. And for math, we brought it from 71% to 89% proficient by the end of the school year. And we were, while bringing those up, decreasing the number of students that we had on watch, intervention, and urgent intervention. We saw in reading, a 3% decrease in the number of students that were on watch, a 10% decrease in the number of students that were on intervention, and kind of our urgent intervention category for reading maintained throughout the course of the year at 3%. For math, we saw an 11% decrease in our number of students on watch, a 6 percentage point decrease in the number of students in intervention, and a 1 percentage point decrease in urgent intervention.
So, we wanted to provide a little bit of information on our RTI, our intervention program, so I'm going to speak a little bit about the reading intervention, and Renee's going to speak to the math intervention. It says a total of 94 students, but if we add everyone together, with students also receiving Lexia support in reading and also math, it's actually 108 students that received intensive targeted instruction this year through our intervention program. And it's a double dose, so in addition to what the students are receiving in guided reading in the classroom, and that real targeted instruction, they also get, for first and second graders, they do get five times per week with 30-minute sessions, so it's very intensive and it's very targeted. So, I'm just going to, I'll just go through grade one, just to kind of give you an idea, but you can look at all of the different grades. And we put grade one first, because those were the most students that we supported, and it just seems to be a little bit of a trend. So, there were 51 students that were supported, so that's 29% of our first grade class. 100% showed growth. And we had 46 of 51 of our students in grade one made significant growth. You could see grade two as well, we actually had 15% of the second grade class, which is kind of where you want it with intervention, it's usually 85, you know, 15%. So, we got it there by the time we went to second grade. And then kindergarten, we don't start right at the beginning of the year, because they're learning the routines and the procedures. So, we usually start to pick them up in February.
One of our big focuses this year was really to bring about some targeted intervention for math, and the same that we, same way that we were doing for reading. And we began the search for some really strong math programs in the start of the school year this year. There's not as much out there as there tends to be for reading that's of the same quality. So, it took us a little bit of time to find something that we really felt comfortable investing in, and what we ended up with, purchasing in probably November, was Do the Math by Marilyn Burns, which is a kind of table time program, where they're meeting in small groups with the teacher. And then, to support that, was the Building Rocks, Building Blocks program by McGraw-Hill, which is a computer-based intervention program that we kind of run in conjunction with that table time with the teacher. By the time these were ordered and arrived, and we got the intervention teachers comfortable with them, we started picking up students in April. We started with a pretty small group of first grade students and a few second grade students to try to pilot this this year, and really see how it was going, and whether it was going to be a successful model for us. We did, based on this data, see pretty good amounts of success with this program, with 64% of our first grade students showing growth, and 100% of our second grade students showing growth in that short period of time between April and June. So, our hope heading into the following school year is to really expand that program, to include all grades, and use it a little bit more in-depth.
Question, this slide here, do you see that changing with the new Meadowbrook math coach, anyway?
The slide we're on right now, I'm sorry. I can't see that far, Rich, I don't have my glasses on.
Slide you're on.
Okay. That's where my laptop is.
15 students.
Do we see that changing?
As far as, the ELA was so much more depth, I'm just wondering if it's because you have a coach here, and you don't have a coach here, that's why I'm asking.
A big part of why ELA is a lot more in-depth is that program has been established for a lot longer, and we have a lot more supports available with our literacy coach, as well as our three reading support teachers and their three paraprofessionals. Our math program, really this year, we just started picking that up, so our hope would definitely be to increase that, a lot more students involved in that program, as well as with the support of that math coach, looking at a lot of different angles that that math coach can be providing, professional development for the teachers, in the same way our literacy coach does, and then picking up, working with our intervention teachers as well.
Mountain View, I have all the data on one slide, trying to be consistent. BAS.
We did try to give a ceiling with how many slides people can use.
The BAS data I'm going to start with, which is the Benchmark Assessment System, a test administered to the students one-to-one by their teacher. So, 100% of the students at Mountain View showed growth on this test this year. Approximately 70% of the students are at or above grade level benchmark. And it's important to note that within the last year, the expectations were raised by Fountas and Pennell. So, it's not as much growth as we've seen in the past, but it's still significant, considering that they raised the grade level expectations within the year. On STAR reading, 84% of our students total are at or above the grade level benchmark. In the fall, we ranged from 66% in third grade to 76% in fifth grade. So, we saw significant growth from the fall to the spring. On STAR math, 89% of the students are at or above grade level benchmark. That is a little bit stagnant from the fall. We were at that already, or close to it, at every grade level in the fall, so it was pretty level.
It's a high school.
It's high, I know. It's hard to go up, right, exactly. And 90% was my goal, so I was close. As far as interventions, a couple of years ago, I started math interventions, which was something new. And reading interventions are done by our reading, our, I'm totally blanking, reading, reading specialists, thank you. So, 25 students received reading interventions from the reading specialists this year. They use, she uses the LLI kit, which is part of Fountas and Pennell. She works with three students at a time, according to their reading level. 24 of the 25 showed growth. 15 out of those 24 made significant growth in their reading levels from the beginning of the year.
Three through five.
Three through five. Three through five. In math, I have a paraprofessional who provides the interventions face-to-face. It's not a computer program either. She had thirty students total twice a week. Twenty-nine of those students showed growth, and twenty-three of the twenty-nine showed significant growth, enough so that at least five or six of the students didn't need the intervention anymore and were taken out of the program. And most of the student, the fifteen and the twenty-three, as long as they're third and fourth graders, won't need to go back in the fall. The fifth grade, of course, are moving on, so.
But they're still monitored?
They're still monitored because of the STAR. Yes, we use the STAR. We decide on who those students are based on the BASS and the STAR in the fall, but then they're monitored throughout the year to see when they can be moved out.
Do we use BASS specifically because it's a Fountas and Pennell assessment? Then because we use Fountas and Pennell as part of our intervention?
Yes.
That's why we chose the BASS?
No, that's not why we chose BASS, that's why we chose the LLI intervention.
Yeah.
So we're paying for both of those, we're paying on how to teach the students and then the assessment itself?
The assessment, the assessment we already have, that's part of the program.
Yeah. It's a corner in the market. Yeah.
There's not a lot of, it's like a one-time cost, basically.
Yeah.
Because we have our own sheets and things like that. The kit is the kit.
Yeah, my thought is more on the assessment and the tool used for the intervention during the teaching is from the same place.
Right, and the reason that a lot of the schools have gone to using the LLI is because of the research behind it. It's really shown to be when, now I'm losing my words. So when it's implemented with fidelity, meaning the way they've designed it, and you have a highly qualified teacher doing it, who's, you know, we have reading specialists who are trained. Some of them are reading recovery trained, so they're highly knowledgeable. When they use those materials and they're implementing them the way they're designed, they have white papers and research out there that shows a significant increase above other intervention programs. It's particularly, newer research has come out around its effectiveness with English language learners, and they're seeing significant improvement. So we're using it with those students as well. And you can see by some of your reading data that it is meaningful. We're not going to continue to use something if we're not getting good results out of it.
So here's what I've created for you, Mr. Pachero. And it's just for you, actually. I was putting this together, I said, Rich is really going to like this. So just looking horizontally, one thing that, you know, I like about STAR is there's multiple ways that you can look at the data. And when we look at at or above a benchmark, when we look at percentile rankings, when we look at student growth percentile, all of those are areas where we have the vocabulary and can have conversations around the student data when it comes to STAR. So in the fall, in our reading data, we started at fifty-ninth percentile, all of our students. And then in the spring, in ELA or reading, we were at the sixty-eighth percentile. In the fall, we were seventy-two percent at or above the benchmark. In the spring, we were eighty-four at or above the benchmark. And then our student growth percentile was sixty-four in ELA, which is excellent. Moderate growth is where we're looking to meet, which is at forty to sixty. So anything above that is high growth. So we're really excited about that. And then it has our changes. So if you look at the changes in percentile ranking, we're at plus nine percent. When we look at at or above, twelve percent of our students changed over time there. So that was reading. And then math, the students surprisingly are, do better in the STAR math than they do in ELA. This kind of goes back, or reading, this goes back year after year. The trends are similar. So in the fall, they came at the sixty-fifth percentile, and then in the spring, they're at the seventy-seventh. The change was plus twelve for percentile ranking. The at or above benchmark was at eighty-four percent already coming in, and then in the spring, we're at ninety-one percent. That was pretty exciting data to be ninety-one percent at or above the benchmark for math. And our SGP was fifty-eight, so it's just, just below that high-growth target. And that was plus seven for a change. For our reading intervention, we had thirty-two students that received intensive reading instruction. And they came in at the thirtieth percentile ranking on average, and then they ended at the forty-third percentile, which was a change of plus thirteen. And then math was excellent. We started at thirty-eight students that required additional math instruction during our intervention time. We're at the twenty-sixth percentile ranking, and those students ended up at the forty-seventh percentile, and there was a change of plus twenty-one percent. So we were really excited about that data. And math in general, hitting ninety-one percent at or above the benchmark for STAR and then having an intervention change of twenty-one percent for percentile ranking was excellent. And that was just remarkable work that we analyzed the exit tickets from the Eureka assessment. We provided intervention, those areas for reteaching moments for students that didn't quite master that particular lesson. We also used Do the Math, which is something that Meadowbrook uses as well. And to answer your question, Rich, with the math coach, we're currently investigating a couple more evidence-based interventions to implement going into next year with our math coach. And not having the math coach, you know, I wouldn't have the resource that she brings to really build this program and intervention program and the professional development around math in general. So that was all very exciting and very exciting to report. Thank you for.
No question. Meadowbrook and Mountain View gives a quick snapshot of what their intervention program looks like. Could you do the same, Mr. Fetter, just a quick snapshot of what it looks like?
Sure. So all the grade levels have a common intervention time there, three thirty-minute blocks per week. So at that intervention time, we really use our data team meetings at the beginning of the year and then make adjustments at the middle of the year for exactly what students are receiving during that time, who the professionals are responsible to be instructing them during that time, and then the app, and then the programming that they are using during that time. So once we have that data team meeting, we analyze all the data, we discuss the learners, we place them into the intervention that's necessary for those three thirty-minute periods per week. We've been doing this now for, this is our third year doing this. And we've had really great results, and this year was our best. So it's getting better and better.
Do you have students at or above benchmark that require intervention? You must.
At or above the benchmark that require.
Because the percentile is based on the amount of students who meet or are at or above benchmark, correct?
The percentile ranking is different than the students that are at or above the benchmark. The benchmark is a target, it's actually at or above the target. It's a target that STAR sets. And the students that meet that target are the percentage of students in Maple Shade that actually meet that target or exceed that specific score. The percentile ranking are how our students on average rank according to the hundreds of thousands of students that take STAR. That's the difference between percentile ranking and target.
So those that are receiving intervention all fall within the thirtieth percentile?
On average.
On average.
On average. They're on, so they're on sort of like.
That's where they fall.
They're on like the low end of the percentile ranking. So when you rank all your students, you have this chunk of students down here that require the intervention. And when we have the data team meetings, that gives us an indicator of the decisions we're going to make to help those students out.
Can I just add that, so when we take a look at the STAR data, usually what it does is it benchmarks kids. So if it's, our kids that fall below forty percent are on watch, below twenty-five percent are intervention, below ten percent are urgent intervention, so.
Percentile.
Percentile, sorry, percentile. So it kind of gives us an idea, you know, where to target, right. And some of those are on watch, you know, but then when they get to a certain level, then.
So we must lose students out of intervention based on our change of percentile?
Yes.
Right. And that's inevitably.
Just move them out.
Mrs. Ruffin, just a presentation clarification. So we're moving now to just a goal number two. So if I'm correct, this is a K through five presentation on just a goal one and two, and then we're going to hear six through twelve for goal one and goal two? Right. That's the way it's organized, okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we were just asked to talk a little bit about the Common Assessments. So in our K grade level, they administer the BASS two times a year. So they usually do it in the winter and in the spring. But first and second grade, the BASS is administered three times a year. For writing, our ELA, our writing Common Assessment, there's three initial assessments that are administered in September, and it's the narrative, the opinion, and the informational. So it's almost kind of like a pre-test type thing. And then they're given a writing post-test that's administered at the end of each unit, at the end of the narrative unit, at the end of the opinion unit, and at the end of the informational unit. And the teachers and literacy coach have created a standards-based instructional rubric that they use with that. For our math, K to two, it's three times a year. And I just wanted to thank Valerie, or Aneer. She actually came and dedicated full days to work with our math curriculum writers in revising and creating the new math assessment. So she met, you know, with kindergarten, with first grade, with second grade, and she stayed all day and worked, so that's completed. And it's actually, it's been created already in the Mastery Connect system. And additionally, our K to two teachers, we participate in half-day data analysis and instructional planning meetings in the fall and in the winter.
The Common Assessment work that we've been doing for the last few years now is starting to get into Mastery Connect. And if we can get all of that set up so our teachers are ready to go as of August 29th, we'll be in a much better position to use that data throughout the year.
So this slide is Mountain View and Maple Shade together. And we're only focusing on, I should have clarified it in the title, the district-developed Common Assessments. The BASS and the STAR, we already talked about. They're common also, but these are the assessments that we've developed. So this year, we used, we gave one ELA assessment and two math assessments. The reason we only did one ELA was the park window. Although we only had one this year, it was extremely long. At our level, we have to provide a lot of accommodations for students, whether it's small group, individual. We had at Mountain View, three kids break their arm right before the test, so they needed scribes. So the window was about five and a half weeks long. We did not want to give the students another test after the park. They were going to have to take the STAR anyway, but that's an easier test for them. It's computer-based, it's not as extensive. So that's why we only gave one this year, just to explain the reason for the difference. We use these tests formatively, as we've already talked about. This was more about what do we need to teach? What do the students need as far as instruction? It wasn't about grading them necessarily. But teachers can use them for grades. They're just not weighted as, you know, maybe the same as other tests that are much, cover more material. We talked about revisions for next year at our grade level curriculum meetings. And Michael's going to talk about the next slide, but it shows how our teachers stored the data this year because we didn't have a Mastery Connect system, so.
Before you move into the data sheets, just a lot of the feedback that Mrs. Sentinel was talking about in terms of the park windows, that's getting good discussion on the state level. Because the windows for park are extremely long, and it's something that both, actually, a few associations are involved in Mass Association for School Superintendents, the Administrators Association across the state are discussing this. Because the goal of formative assessment is not necessarily to continuously assess your students, is to strategically place assessments where you can use it and gain the data quickly enough to actually inform instruction. And so we're keeping that balance in mind, both locally, but also keeping the discussion going at the state level. And I know that MASC is lobbying the legislature around that as well.
There is some, there is starting to show some movement on it, too, that'll help us out going forward.
Well, we're going to continue to make local decisions that are going to be in the best interest of our students.
So one quick question, then. So you two are giving the same Common Assessments at two different schools? So fourth grade, whatever.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
So all those teachers have had collaboration time together between the two schools?
That's right. And more so this year for next year's assessments.
And that's where the coach also becomes so important.
Right.
They're getting similar support.
Both coaches helped a lot.
As well as strategic planning for the administrators with the coach. So we're seeing.
So the numbers on this, do you mind, Gordon?
Yeah, no.
The numbers on this are important. I just put this up almost as sort of like a selling point as to why we need a data warehousing portal in our district. So this is just an example of one teacher's classroom roster and how the data for the Common Assessment, STAR, Benchmark Assessment, Math Assessment, ELA Assessment is all stored. And then they go to the data team and they analyze these spreadsheets and really try to find instructional gaps in learning or celebrations in learning as well. But it does get cumbersome to look through all of this data as a teacher and then try to make the best instructional decisions for students. And then the assessment behind it as well is there. So when you want to really drill down to a particular student and how they were assessed and what standards were met or not met on that assessment, it's very challenging to do a great job with data team when you look at data in this way. But they are warehousing this, they are meeting about this. We are, all of us collectively, are making the best intervention decisions possible. The good news of this is this then gets shared forward. So I take all of this data and we share it with next year's teachers. So that teacher, right from the beginning of the year, knows where the students are at, and it also helps between schools. So Meadowbrook shares their data with us, we share our data with Birchland. So that has been helpful, you know, for this system. But this is our district Common Assessment Analysis Sheet as it stands right now. So I just wanted to show you a model of it.
So each row represents a student?
Yes. And it's much longer than that. Part of it.
The students are cut off the boards. And I even think I cut a follow BASS off of there on accident, but it's just really to show you a model of what we're working with.
And the teachers have to hand-enter all this into a Google sheet. So after they're grading, they're still entering it all into the.
If we can build the assessments into Mastery Connect.
Right.
Machines during the work.
Okay.
So just very briefly, kind of the big key points of how did we get there? With the new math curriculum, we've had a very heavily standards-based math instructional focus for all of our professional development at Meadowbrook this year. We brought it as a thread throughout everything we did, right through our grade level times and team time and all of that. We have done, watched videotapes of our colleagues. We've even watched a videotape of Lisa going in and doing some math lessons in the classroom and then debriefed around those videos. We've had a full-day workshop with the Eureka representative as well as a representative from Booney Math Consulting once we got a little further in the year to see how can we now take this wonderful resource that we have and start to begin differentiating for our students. She did a lesson study model where she came in and pre-conference with teachers during their grade level time before school. She went in and modeled lessons and then debriefed with our whole group and then really got into how can we now take this model and begin getting deeper with our kids. We moved, because of that shift towards math and our whole school professional development, our ELA professional development became a little bit more embedded, and that's where having coaches is such an amazing thing. We were able to really focus our lesson study, our work with all of our grade levels, K to two this year, around fully implementing our Words Their Way Word Study Program. Last year was a pilot year where some of the teachers did that. This year, full implementation. We also revised and aligned math and ELA Common Assessments, as Lisa already discussed. And for grades K to two, we met at least twice this year to analyze student work and begin planning. And part of that, in addition to just looking at data and planning next steps and instruction within our classroom and across the grade level, is we embed professional development within those days as well, where we will videotape one of our kids and one of our teachers doing one of the BASS assessments. We'll then watch it together. We'll then watch it together, we'll analyze it together, we'll talk about it in order to try to calibrate. Because there is a little bit of a subjective piece to that that we're always trying to get a little bit tighter and a little bit tighter on each year.
Our action steps were, I had two learning walks. And I used the praise and polish focus, which I learned at a workshop earlier in the year from Kim Marshall, who writes a lot of books on teacher observation. So basically, as we walked through the room, the people that were on the walk focused on what was something they could praise and what is something that could be polished in the room as we walked through. And I shared all of the feedback with the whole staff, obviously with that names attached. We have professional development focused on Eureka Math, Empowering Writers, which is a writing program, and Student Behavior. Our technology continued to be integrated in our PTO. I'd like to thank, just bought us another Chromebook cart and 25 Chromebooks, as well as five more iPads. They had been kind of saving money in anticipation of building a playground in about 10 years. It would have taken that long to accumulate the money. So they had money that they wanted to spend, so they bought us what we asked for. So we will not have as many fights in the hallways over the carts. Our staff meetings were used for professional development and collaboration, and data teams, mindfulness with Gina Rotis. And Common Assessments were analyzed and revised during the data team, as well as talking about student progress at the time.
Maple Shade, we also had learning walks. We focused on student collaboration in the classroom and reflection, teacher checks for understanding, and instructional strategies, and a learning time structure. So basically, when teachers went into the classroom, there were questions to answer with all of these categories is how were the students collaborating and reflecting on their learning? How did the teacher check for understanding? What instructional strategy were used? And how was the learning time structured? They answered all those questions in the debrief and then shared them out with the staff. And we sort of pulled some kind of golden nuggets from that collectively as a school to improve our professional development as well, focused on Eureka Math. We tried to provide options that deepen teachers' content knowledge and to differentiate options for professional needs. So we had a Math, we had an ELA, we had a Special Education, we had a Science opportunity when we could provide it. We as well are improving our technology integration all the time. I think having more Chromebooks added to our school next year is going to be very welcome. We're looking forward to that. We do our Common Assessment Analysis according to that Google data sheet that I showed you previously. And we're really trying to focus more and more on innovative ideas and innovation in the classroom and innovative programs and projects all the time. We had a Gems Club after school, which is Girls Excelling in Math and Science. We have robotics for all of our students. We have opportunities for project-based learning. We have a tech club that meets midday. We try to focus a lot of our lessons on STEM integration into many, many things. Genius Hour is something that was new, that sort of cropped up this year in third grade. We have our Invention Convention. Our GT Push-In Program does engineering design model. And, you know, any more and more things that come up, we're more and more things we want to, you know, try to strive toward doing in this area. So that's something that I'm very proud of for Maple Shade.
TV studio?
We have a TV studio. That's our tech club. Yeah. We have a TV with a green screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, just doing a lot of work with Don Mackey, it's great.
Excellent. A lot of the things you see in all three key action steps, you see an incredible amount of collaboration. Just to touch on, the learning walks have come so far. In my first-year superintendent, to provide that type of feedback, you would have had a good deal of resistance. Not even provide the feedback, but entering into classrooms in groups of three, four, and so forth. But the culture across the district certainly has changed where people are seeing that as a plus and that they're getting good information back from their colleagues. And as we get better as instructors collaborating with each other, I think then we are better at providing lessons that allow our students to collaborate.
Okay, so now we'll look at some Birchland Park data. What you're looking at here is STAR reading growth. We look a lot at growth percentages, although we do have the overall percentages on the third slide. So this is just two columns. If you're looking at the chart, it's the median student growth percentage of all of our students and then of our tiered students. As you know, we focus a lot on our tiered programs. So the median student growth for the year, you can see on the left column there, 47, 56, 58. We certainly like to be up in the upper 50s, but anywhere from 40 to 60 is considered good. So that's all in that ballpark. And then especially in seventh and eighth, we're very proud of the tiered students' STAR reading growth because a lot of those students are dealing with, by the time they get to the middle school, you see what they've already been through intervention-wise. So if they're still, if they're in our tiered reading program, a lot of them can be dealing with some real challenges. So to still have growth percentages of 41, 63, and 55, we're very happy with. And then you can see in seventh grade, it's more, it's actually a faster rate of growth than all students. And in eighth grade, it's close. So the next slide talks a little bit about Fuentes and Pennell. We also do benchmark testing using Fuentes and Pennell in our tiered reading classes only. So we don't do this with the whole school, we just do it with our tiered students. The reason we do Fuentes and Pennell is that all of my tiered reading team would just agree, it gives much clearer formative data and gets you way closer in touch with exactly what's going on versus just the STAR assessment. And the STAR assessment's very formative, but Fuentes and Pennell takes it even further. So they did raise their expectations, Fuentes and Pennell, this year. But even with those expectations raised, 30% of our tiered students by the end of the year were at grade level or one, 30% were at grade level and 24% were just one year below grade level. So of all our tiered students, 54% of them were at grade level or one year below by year's end. So that means, if you look at the very bottom, a lot of our tiered students gained more than a year's growth within one year. So we're also very proud of that. Our tiered program has become so specialized that there's like multiple intervention programs taking place in the same class at the same time, from Lexia to a new program we implemented called Visualizing and Verbalizing, which is really reaching some of our lowest readers and really showing us growth in those students. So I'd be lying if I said I understood everything that was going on in that room, but I understand that the professionals do, and they're doing a lot of really good stuff, and the data is showing it. The next slide is Math Growth on STAR. And again, we want to be in the 40 to 60. You can see our, if you look down the all students, 49, 52, 49, so right where we should be. And then our tiered students in Math are growing at a faster rate than our, than our general population. So again, the tiered students, the Math student growth is extremely high, 56, 61, and 57. I forgot to say this on the other slide, but we had 19 students this year get out of tiered reading during the year because of the work they were doing and the progress they made. We had 50 students get out of tiered Math during the year. Now, some of these students will end up back in tiered Math because they'll fall behind again. And we look, it's three times a year, it's one of the more sort of larger processes we go through each, in the middle of each year. It takes three or four days to go through all the data and decide who's coming out, who's going in. But to have 50 students get out of tiered Math during the year, I think that's also just a testament to the fact, to the way we built the system. Young adolescents need authentic carrots, like, to truly engage. And so by making it so they can get out, we're seeing a lot more hard work out of students who I think if they couldn't get out, would just kind of coast. So it's working. And then the next one is the more, is the more general slide that we've all had, which is just, yeah.
I haven't gone through this. Shouldn't the tiered Math slide be next?
I just did tiered Math.
After you went over the STAR reading, you looked at one of all the different tiered students. I noticed Alex is coming up after this, correct?
So we did STAR reading growth.
Then there's a slide on.
And then we did Fuentes and Pennell, like BASS, just to follow reading. Then we did STAR Math Growth.
Okay.
And now, before we leave, before we leave STAR, so, yeah, maybe. But so before we leave STAR, this is just overall STAR. That in sixth grade, 78% of our kids were at or above benchmark in reading. In seventh grade, 75, in eighth grade, 77. Then you can look at the bottom, and that's the Math. 87% in sixth grade at or above, 89% in seventh, and 86% in eighth. So very similar to the other schools' data in that Math seems to outscore reading and STAR. You know, who knows what that means? Because usually on park, ELA outscores Math. But numbers in the ballpark with the elementary. So we're a little behind them in our percentages in the reading, but we're right with them in our percentages in the Math. So then the next slide is just a look at Alex. I think you all know at this point that we use Alex as our RTI program in our Math class, or as our main one. Alex is run through Scholastic. So this is a hard one to really present clear data on. It's even a hard one for them to explain to me the data on. But this is the best I could come up with, which is students, when they first enter into the world of Alex, they take an assessment. And the assessment tells you which grade level they should start learning at. So not just testing at, Alex tests you and teaches you at the same time. So if you look at sixth grade, and we'll just do that one. But if you look at sixth grade, at the beginning of the year, 63% of students, when they pre-test in Alex, were designated to start at a grade level course that's two or more years below their grade level. Okay?
63% of your tiered students.
Of our tiered students.
These are already identified.
Yeah.
Already identified students.
Yep, of our tiered students. And so then, the whole goal is how much do they grow while they're in tiered? And when they're in tiered, they're working and learning on web-based Alex and they're working and learning independently with word from the teacher. And they're working and learning in small groups with targeted topics by the teacher. So you can see if we just look at sixth, 63% of them to start the year were two or years, two or more years below grade level. And by the end, there was nobody that far behind. 28% were one year below grade level, and by the end, there was nobody that far behind. And then 9% of our tiered kids were working at grade level. And by the end, 100% of them were working at grade level. Now, that does not mean they've mastered grade level. That just means they've gotten to the point where they've mastered, according to Alex, below grade level. And now they're working on a grade level course. Hope that makes sense. So then you can see for seventh and eighth, the same kind of trends. I don't, I don't want to walk you through them, but.
Yeah.
So we're seeing, so we would argue that Alex is still really working. And kudos to the students because they really engage with it. They have a notebook with them while they're doing it. They have a paraprofessional that's math-certified that walks around and is over their shoulders helping them. You know, they're young adolescents, they don't always feel like doing it, but they do do it. And you can see the results because they engage with it.
Todd Young, as I asked, everybody's building a snapshot of how this plays into the schedule. There are how much for reading and how much for Math Tier Instruction?
Yeah, so in sixth grade, we try to catch kids. So if they're in tiered reading or tiered Math, they have it every day.
Okay.
In seventh and eighth, it is a three-day-a-week class, much like Spanish, scheme, a couple other classes, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so unlike grades K through eight, the high school does not use a very standardized software assessments like the BASS and the STAR. A lot of the data that we generate has to be very specific, either the national standard, state standard. They're definitely more content and skill-based and very specific to the many different types of, not only core classes that we teach, but also our elective courses. So it's a little bit difficult to, you can't really find a program that fits neatly into the high school model. So that being said, this year, we really wanted to jump on the bandwagon of collecting data, and it was really challenging. We started off the year just trying to find something that would work. And, you know, we gave our teachers the flexibility to kind of do things that felt comfortable for them. We didn't want to have to teach a whole new system to everybody. So we had some teachers that were utilizing Google Documents. Some teachers were creating their own spreadsheets in Excel. I did purchase a software program called Grade Cam, which allowed the teachers to have their kids, you know, take a picture of their assessment to collect data. So in terms of unified data reporting system, we were all over the place, which really made the task of collecting and analyzing data very difficult. So what I have in front of you is I kind of picked the best of the bunch in terms of how one department kind of organized their data this year. So as you can see, this is what we call the Data Protocol Sheet. And what we asked, what was common in this process is we asked every content area. So R, PE, and English, Math, and Science. We said, "Take a look at your Common Assessments." And, you know, we've done a lot of work in developing our Common Assessments. And we said to them, "The priority standards, the key really meat of your course, we'd like you to create an assessment that gives some feedback on that." So that was done, again, through every core content at the high school. And so as you can see here, this is just a sample. So English picked a series of different Common Core standard, standards that they utilized for their assessments. Again, we didn't do Term One because we didn't have an assessment tool in place. But they did give the assessment for Term Two and Term Three. So you can see that particularly, this is a 10th grade class, which obviously is our MCAS class. We did see some growth with our 10th graders in terms of some of those important standards. And then we asked the teachers to identify the strengths and the urgent needs. Now, these conversations took place at their department meetings, and they were led by the department chairs. We asked, so every content area did this. So Math did this, Science did this across the board. The next step that we asked them to do is, okay, now that you've seen the scores, you've seen the strengths, you've seen your urgent needs, now let's ask some key questions that'll help get our students back on track. So some of the things we asked our teachers to do is, you know, what are, taking a look at the data, what are some questions that you have as instructors to move the instruction, the teaching, learning forward? What were some possible root causes for some of the things that you were seeing with your data? And then we had each team develop some learning goals moving forward in terms of teaching, but also learning that could be implemented in the classroom. And then identify some strategies that collectively you guys could employ. In terms of our Math Department, one of the things I think that was really, I think, a positive thing that come out of this year was Valerie actually came to the high school. And as you know, we don't have the park as a mandated testing for the high school right now. But we wanted to kind of get ahead and start looking at the park assessments and some of the things that our students can be expected to do. And as we all know, it's extremely, much more rigorous than what our kids are now getting with the typical MCAS question. And so what we asked the Math Department to do is we first asked them to take a look at the questions and kind of pick it apart, like, you know, is this in line with some of the things that are going on in your classroom? And the conversation's really powerful. Our Math teachers, you know, across the board were like, "This test is a lot harder than what our kids are probably used to." And so one of the things that we tried to get them to do, and it's a work in progress, it's something that we're going to connect, continue next year, is we had them take a look at their Common Assessments and compare them to the park test. And we had them, you know, rate how your test in terms of rigor rates to the park. And that was another aha moment. And so the conclusion of that work was that, moving into next year, we're going to start tweaking and modifying the Common Assessments that are delivered for the Math Department so that they model some of the things that the kids are going to be expecting in the park, which equals a lot more rigor for our students. So we're kind of doing that across the board. We also did that in English, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The one thing I did want to point out is you hear a lot about interventions at the K through eight level. And a couple of years ago, we took a stab at creating a tiered instruction courses at the high schools. You know, because you approved those courses. We had one in Math, we had one in English. I can tell you that for both Math and English, we probably identified a total of 12 to 15 students that were considered in need for interventions at the high school level. And unfortunately, what happened was, I think for the high school student, it is a really hard pill to swallow to be placed in a course where they perceive there's a stigma. So we're in the tiered Math course, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, uncomfortable feelings about that. And as a result of that, we had a lot of kids' parents sign them out of class. They dropped the class. So we started off the year with like 10 kids, 15 kids, and with a drop-off, we were running a class of three, three kids. So, you know, at the high school with personnel and staffing, it's just not feasible to run courses that low. We've talked to different high schools. As a matter of fact, when we had our program, we were getting calls from across the district or across the region, "We want to see your program." And, you know, that was an indication to us that a lot of high schools are struggling with the idea of providing those type of interventions. But thankfully, because of the work these guys are doing, that the more interventions and the more we're catching students along the way, the hope is that when they get to high school, those numbers of kids needing, um, help with remedial foundational skills will be lower. So it'll help us as we kind of dive right into the content and skills for the different courses that we have. So the next slide, um, as I said, we're trying to take a systematic approach, um, of trying to improve our core content at the high school. I just mentioned the work that we're doing with mathematics. Um, the math department this year focused their professional learning communities on the mathematical practices. And I invited Gordon and some of the other, Valerie, to come to our end-of-the-year, um, PLC presentation, but we had a situation at the high school that prevented, prevented that from happening. But if you had come, you would have seen videos that the math department, um, did this year in which they videotaped each other and, um, created a video of the mathematical practices that were being utilized within their classroom. So they are definitely being reflective and trying to work on, on kind of aligning themselves to a more rigorous curriculum. The work that we did with six through twelve vertical alignment, I think was really powerful. Um, what, what we did was, um, we wanted to make sure that grades six through twelve, that we were hitting all the standards appropriately. We wanted to make sure that there weren't gaps in learning six through twelve. And so, um, myself, Valerie, and Tim, and Connor, and we, we got together and we created this two-day workshop. And essentially what we asked all the teachers to do, so it was, is six through twelve English teachers, which is really unique to get them all together, and they got along great, by the way. Um, what we had them do is we had them take a look at their curriculum. This is just a sampling right here, this is just a grade nine. So we had them do this for grades six through twelve. And, um, we took the, we picked apart the strands for ELA, and we said, "Okay, what, what are your priority skills per grade level? What are the major products that you require your students to do? And what standards do you focus on?" And so we did that, six through twelve, we had a gallery walk, where everybody went around and took notes. And then, the next slide, as you can see here, we kind of started charting out, you know, what standards are being covered six through twelve, so that we could get into deeper conversations, "Okay, well, how much, um, is covered? Are there gaps?" And as you can see here, um, one of the biggest gaps, at least from the high school perspective, that we discovered through this work was that we weren't doing enough informational text, enough of diving into that. So that's, that kind of has changed a lot of the, um, work that our teachers are doing at the high school. So I think we, we really would like to do something very similar to this, um, for math next year. It's just a matter of kind of coordinating and finding the time to get everybody together. But I think, um, teachers would tell you that for them, it was, it was a unique experience to be able to sit down with their colleagues, um, at the middle school and kind of flush out, you know, what are, what are the things that are going on at the secondary level with their, their content area. So that's it for the high school. Oh, I will say one other thing. I know it would sound like a broken record. We were, we're going to be very excited when Mastery Connect comes into place, because we've never had anywhere near what, I mean, at least they have some nuggets of similarity within their common assessment data. We've had nothing. So for our teachers, it's going to be very powerful. Um, myself and Frank are representing the high school with the Mastery Connect, um, data entry this summer. And one of the things, um, we were so excited to see is that our teachers are going to be able to put their normal, like their everyday assessments in there as well. So it's not just the common assessments, but they can see how it gradually builds to those common assessments. And I think that's going to be a real eye-opener for a lot of our teachers as well.
Definitely, just one question. Going back to the tiered instruction, um, how, with my memory, if, I know we do very well, and I'm cast. I think we're, and I'm nodding, everybody passing, but those students that get needs improvement, do they still have to have kind of like a, and they're not special education, they still have to have kind of a tiered plan?
There is a, a plan for them to.
What's it called?
Um, it's.
FPP?
IPP.
IPP.
So we have to create some kind of plan to help them reach their goals by the time that they graduate.
So is necessarily at the, at that level, there is, there is a tiered plan?
It is, but it's not as comprehensive and standard-based focused as, as meaty as the assessments that they're doing in terms of like getting to those foundational skills. You know, one of the things that we're doing again this year is we're offering our very own, um, summer school for math. And, you know, it's really, it's really, it's really frustrating, because we know we have a need for it, but then we don't get kids signing up for, you know, I think the high school, uh, the psyche of the high school student is, is very different, and their priorities are just, you know, a little bit challenged. I've got a lot of things going on, a lot of things going on. But, um, we have a need for it, it's just, you know, we can't require kids to take these courses. It really has to be a family decision. And unfortunately, um, I wish we could run a tiered instruction class, because I, I think the kids that were in it, they improved and it had benefit. Um, it's just a little bit more challenging at our level.
I think what you're doing is, and just because of that point, probably trying to change culture.
Yeah.
Change, you know, Friday came, okay, we don't have to worry about anything anymore.
Right.
Learning stopped. When in all actuality, it doesn't.
Right, right.
But, you know, good job with the effort, but I understand where, you know, and it, like I said, you're changing, trying to change a culture, that you need the constant, um, intervention to continue to learn, so.
I mean, like I said, we have kids that need it.
Right.
Um, it's not enough to unfortunately run a course, but, um.
But if they're just getting by, they don't see the need, that's where the problem.
That's the issue.
It's the branding issue.
It is the branding issue.
And no matter how you slice it, high school kids are smart. They know, they know what that course means, and they know.
Yeah, just ask them.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along.
Okay, so at the district level, uh, we've had and will continue to have a goal that's around our climate and engaging, um, our full learning community, as well as the community at large. As much of what we just discussed through Goals One and Two cannot happen if you're not providing students with a structured, nurturing, and respectful learning and working environment. And that's actually true for adults as well. And that comes through everyone's work here. But it also comes through our work with partners in the community and our work with our parents as we continue to partner, partner with them pre-K through twelve. The focus may change as you go to the different buildings, um, targeted specifically on some of the things that that building community may look to, um, increase, uh, results on a positive level. But, uh, the concept is the same. So if you look at the next slide, uh, from a district-wide perspective, uh, some of the things that we've been concentrating on over the last year, in almost two years, is working with our EOPS Youth Safety Committee, which, um, brings in a number of partnering community agencies or community groups. Um, this year, we had two parent and, um, family nights, if you will, that were very well-attended and have provided us feedback to continue working on, how do we build a list of effective resources to help support our students who may be struggling with some of these issues? We also continue to work very closely with our District Attorney's Office. We had two students on the Youth Advisory Board. We're working to select at least two more students. The hope will be that we actually, um, have juniors next year, so that, uh, students can go through two years on that advisory board, uh, which I think will be very beneficial, having East Long Meadow students on that Youth Advisory Board. Um, it's not only beneficial just for our students collaborating and, um, problem-solving with other students from the region. It's also beneficial as that group comes back, which this year they did, um, for our third and fourth graders, to see our own high school students up there presenting, that have, goes a long way with our younger students. We started a partnership, uh, which has paid some nice dividends with Academy Hill around, um, Gifted and Talented Programming, that, uh, not only brought us some, um, international visitors from Iceland. Many of you actually, uh, stopped in to meet our international visitors. But it also started to look at, as well as, um, gave us, I think, Mr. Fredrick termed it as a learning celebration. Um, in October, we had an outside group looking at our Gifted and Talented Program and really complimenting us on our push-in portion, um, which is not something that, um, districts around the state or maybe throughout the nation do regularly and consistently as much as we do. Um, with that help and some ongoing discussions, we then, as, um, central office administrators and elementary school administrators, as well as our Gifted and Talented teachers, started to look at how we structure that program and were beginning to make some changes, which I think will benefit all our students. You've heard about the math programming and professional development. We also did three parent nights in the fall around that, which were well-attended. Um, and we continue to look for ways to bring information to our parents that is going to make sense and help them understand what we're doing. One of those was, as we moved into our standards-based report card, we provided a training that was, um, expertly narrated, mostly by Mr. Zunier. But, um, I had a few pieces where maybe just below the expert level, um, where we provided, um, some training and, and insight into that report card. And so that may be a vehicle that we use, um, down the road, continue to use, and that was on our webpage. The next slide, uh, just gives you a look at some of these community events. Uh, you have our Youth Advisory Board, and that's actually one of our East Long Meadow students up there presenting. Uh, that was at Mountain View. Then we, uh, the parent night that was held in December, that's one of our panel speakers, um, that picture right there, and that was probably one of the more, um, riveting moments through that whole, um, presentation. That's a former East Long Meadow, or it is an East Long Meadow High School alum, former East Long Meadow student, um, came back and is giving of his time. And then you see, um, the, the audience perspective on that same night, um, as they look at not only different things on screen, but you have your panel speakers over there to the right. Give you an idea of what, how that's working in the schools. We'll move to our elementary schools first.
So in striving to increase, um, parent and family engagement and two-way communication with families, we hosted a few, um, family information nights. Um, Gordon spoke to one of them. We had a math information night, and we actually had teachers present lessons to familiarize parents with the New Eureka Math Program. Um, but this is, um, a, a picture of, uh, part of a slideshow. And it was called "Solving the Worry Puzzle." And our two phenomenal counselors, Betsy Sheehan and Joe Hudson, facilitated this workshop for families. And, uh, the focus was really to help provide parents with some strategies to help their children with anxiety. We also had a parent, um, help facilitate, uh, a little bit on breathing, um, and on yoga. In addition to that, we also had some family activity events.
So without getting too much into the data here, one of our measures of success in this area is our parent survey, which we give not just to our exiting families, but to all of our families K to two. We want to catch them before they're leaving, so that we can make those improvements. Um, so just taking a look at this year's data in a very broad sense, uh, it was very overwhelmingly positive, I believe. All of but two scored at an eighty percent agreement rate or better. Our lowest one was, uh, seventy-four, and we really only had two in the seventies. What we do with this data each year is we sit down and look at it, both just Lisa and I, and then we look at it with our school council, which includes parents and staff members as well. From this data, we determine three areas usually that we want to focus on in the upcoming school year. So not looking at the data that you have up here, but looking at the data from the year before, which we were working on all year this year. We focused on the areas of students in my child's school respect differences in other students. I feel that learning expectations are clearly communicated. And I feel that there are adult programs and procedures in place to challenge my child in math. Some of the things we put in place this year, um, to help with these areas is we expanded our Second Steps program, as we've explained to you a few times in the past. We had just a first-grade model. We've expanded that now to include K to two with the help of a grant from Eleaf. We've also hosted, which you'll see in a few more slides, an amazing international night. Last year was our first year that our PTO helped organize this, and this year we expanded to include Lake, Shade, and Mountain View as well in our international celebration. We've also, um, in terms of communicating learning expectations, do that through family newsletters, teacher newsletters, math information night, and other parent nights. And then, we, in terms of challenging kids in math, we've adopted a new math curriculum that is very rigorous, very aligned with the common core state standards, and worked really hard this year to put some interventions in place and to, um, acquire that position for the math coach to complete the coaching model. So what we're going to do now with the data that you were actually just looking at is meet with our team in the fall to determine what areas we're going to work on going forward.
How did you conduct this survey? What's it on, Survey Monkey?
Yes. Survey Monkey. Say that again?
What churn rate?
One hundred, I want to say one hundred twenty, one hundred nineteen this year. We have five hundred and seventy. Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to jump on, uh, something that Elaine maybe can ta, tell everyone what she does as well. There's a little incentive. There's, there's a, uh, extra printed, uh, page that after the parent, um, completes it, they print it out. And what do they get, Elaine?
Well, it depends on which room they're in. Each room gave out a different type of reward. I didn't, I still didn't get the return rate I wanted doing that, but we tried.
Twenty percent isn't bad, you know?
Yeah, we want more.
That's what you're looking for.
I know.
To start out and just keep going forward, I think is good.
They, they printed off of Survey Monkey?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so on, on this one, just really quickly, our Meadowbrook Second Step. Um, just to let you know, and I think, um, Renee had talked a little bit about it, but we have expanded this program. And Betsy and Joe have met with every, um, classroom, so there's twenty-five classes, ten times. So they met, uh, they had facilitated two-hundred-and-fifty Second Step classes. Um, and basically, it's a social emotional skills program, and it teaches kids empathy, problem-solving, uh, emotional management, and also focusing and attention and listening skills. So this was a survey that they gave to teachers, and the, the question was overall, "Do you see your students solving problems with one another effectively?" And the blue was before receiving Second Step instruction, and the red was after seeing it. And you can kind of see that positive shift where, um, with the red, after they received it, we've eliminated the strongly disagree, and we have, um, more strong, strongly agree.
And then, just a few pictures, because how cute are those kids? Um, we had an amazing Family International Night that included so many different things. Food, traditional clothing, artifacts and pottery from other cultures, music and dance. Uh, we had a lot of families come in traditional clothing, which was fantastic to see. Lots of great food, lots of great conversations between the families. And I think it was, um, just a wonderful night, and very glad we could expand that to include the other two schools this year. And in addition to these, we've had Family Pizza Night, Family Reading Night, Math Informational Night, Donuts with Dad, which was wildly successful morning event that may have wreaked a little havoc on the parking situation. Um, Family Picnic, and I, I kind of regretted after the fact that we had Family Picnic so close to when we put this together, because could have shown you some great video of Lisa getting dumped in the dunk tank.
And I was at that Family Picnic, what an amazing event.
I know, I know.
It was incredible.
The best, yeah, it was awesome.
Incredible, there was a, the line for the dunk tank was.
Well, if you're an administrator up there, it's obvious why.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cushman even came back and put himself up there in the dunk tank as well. So it was, it was a great event. And then we also had a month-long spotlight, um, actually a little over a month-long spotlight on Focus for Kindness that was really tied, um, to, was working to raise funds for Team Isabella. And throughout that time, we were recognizing the small acts of kindness that kids were doing each and every day, and building a paper chain, which ended up starting off with three links and spanning a good portion of our cafeteria by the time it was done.
Good.
I think I'm going to show my stupidity right now with this question. You, you can't do exit surveys with the students in grade two, for example. Exit surveys of students in grade two.
No, we're, we're, yeah, we're just doing the parent survey. I mean, we could create something.
I was just, I was just asking.
Have to think creatively around that one, Rich.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this year was the first year that we surveyed all students at Mountain View. We were just doing an exit survey of the fifth graders. So these are the results. There's only about ten questions on the survey, so I just picked the ones that I felt were the most important for you to see. The lowest scoring one in the whole survey was Mountain View students respect each other. In the past, that was Mountain View students respect each other's differences. And it was always the lowest, uh, scoring question. So we thought maybe they didn't understand the question, so we changed it, and we still didn't get, um, different results. The problem is, I eliminated two years ago the sometimes button, because I found I was getting forty percent of kids hitting sometimes. I think they were just going click, 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 instead of thinking about the question. So I made them agree or disagree. So in a lot of the comments, they literally said, "Could you add a sometimes button? Because sometimes we respect each other, but sometimes we don't." So they went with the negative when they answered the question, but in their comments want me to add a sometimes button.
Well, it's an interesting, uh, observation.
Yes, they, they didn't mention it, so we will do it. Yes, they, they didn't mention it, so we will do it.
But even though you used the phrase, well, three out of four students.
Yes, I know. I just, the rest of them are so high that it felt, it felt low. I mean, I'm glad they feel welcome, and I know they know who to go to with a problem, but. And then we, we did the parent survey, and I had a 52% response rate, which is high, but I was hoping with the incentive it would be even higher, but.
Well, you just got to build off it, that's all.
Yes, so I was happy that I combined two questions and statement number one. One was my child's happy at Mountain View, one was my child feels safe, but both came back at 100%, which I was really happy with. I mean, if they're happy and safe, then they're learning, is my feeling. So I'm glad they feel that way. The lowest one was 93%. Both my child and I are kept aware of how my child is doing in school. Still very high, but that was the lowest scoring percentage. They're happy with our bullying curriculum, communication, and I'm assuming the 4% that didn't like the discipline, I meant anti-bullying, sorry. It's nine o'clock. School just ended. I'm assuming the 4% who aren't happy with the discipline received some type of discipline.
Right.
And then the pictures, this was a great assembly the PTO just brought to us during the last week of school. It was African drummers and dancers. The kids had a blast. If you go online, you can see videos. I won't encourage it because I'm in one, but.
Oh, wow.
They are on our website. Jeremiah is really the one you want to see. He has his own link, so I would check that out. These pictures are just pictures of different things that have gone on at the school this year. Starting at the top left is our garden. And I just love that picture of Colby, so I had to put it up there. So they go out to the garden, different classes all throughout the year. They plant, they weed, they dig, they do everything out there. Field Day, top right. The bottom right is our staffers' staff volleyball game. Oh, Greg, your daughter's in the picture. I didn't even know that until right now. So that's a, that's a popular event. We actually raised close to $3,000 or a little more than $3,000 for the PTO.
Wow, this is rocking.
Yes, it was. And then the last picture is our science night, which the PTO and two of my fifth grade teachers, one fifth grade teacher and the GT teacher organized, which was very successful. That's it.
So you just have to tell us about your incentive.
Oh, okay, so the la, if you go on Survey Monkey, you can make the last page be just a statement that says thank you for taking your survey. So when I told the parents about it, I told them to print the last page and bring it in. And the kids would receive some kind of incentive from their teacher. So some teachers have jars of cubes in their room, and if they accumulate a certain amount of cubes, they get cubes, like little plastic cubes.
What do you do with it?
If they get to a certain point, they get a movie. They get an extra recess.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Got to fill the jar with cubes.
Oh, so they got a cube, they take holding up this cube.
No, they don't get the cubes. They fill the jar to a certain point, and they get a reward. So if everyone brought in the printed page, then they get a lot, it would fill up the jar.
Yeah.
I didn't get it either, bitch.
Yeah, well.
She's humoring you.
I got it. Okay, very good.
No colors, Mr. Fadet.
This is just, you know, go ahead.
One thing that I need to eliminate is the I-don't-know button. So these numbers don't add up to 100%.
Obviously.
Right. And so about 100 students filled this out for fifth grade exit survey, and so every percentage is one student. The students that disagreed were very, very low with any of these statements except for the Maple Shade students respect each other. So rather than look at the 64% agree, I kind of looked at the 16% disagree. So there's kind of 16 students out there in fifth grade that feel like students don't respect each other. I was a little disappointed. We did do work around this. This is the one, much like Elaine, that says comes out the lowest every year. And we increased our Second Step programming as well, specifically at the fifth grade level, where every student receives Second Step instruction. We used an inventory assessment called a SABR's assessment that teachers fill out, which kind of screens the students for some maybe at-risk criteria or some criteria that requires a counseling intervention. So we provided small group counseling interventions for the areas according to the SABR's assessment. So I was a little disappointed when this came out. I know it's 16 students that really disagree with this, but if we're going to continue working on that and continue working in this area, it'll probably be a very, very, very immediate meeting that I'd hold at the beginning of the school year to sort of brainstorm how we can do better in this area. So that's the student survey results. The parent results, they don't have the sometimes or don't know button, so this was great. They, the, all of the results were very, very high, all in the 90s. Nothing was in the 80s, which I was really happy about. So the area on this one was my child knows who to go to if they have a problem. So that was 92% feel like they do know who to go to, but that was our lowest. So maybe we can work with third graders early on in that area, so they do know that going into the building. Here's our school climate photos. I tried to focus on the photos where parents were involved. So school climate involved staff, students, and parents. The first photo was our JB's Ice Cream Factory Scoop-a-thon that we did at the beginning of the year. So those are two staff members, Mrs. McCauley and Mrs. Starks, that were scooping ice cream. That was a wonderful event. There was a lot, a lot of families showed up for that. And then we had a hike to Skinner State Park, where parents were involved to hike with their students as well. This was a fourth grade field trip. It looked at geology and rock formations and the curriculum frameworks, and that was at Skinner State Park. That was an excellent day. The next one at the top left, that was the robotics amusement park. Generate an open-ended problem to solve and build an amusement park ride with your robot. Parents were invited into that showcase. Then we had a Stars going from top left to top right. A Stars residency grant that we applied for and were awarded. That was for $4,600. This was Motoko, who is a professional Japanese storyteller, and she worked on storytelling and folk tales and writing and reading, mainly some really important ELA standards that students did excellent work, and parents were invited for their showcase. And then the bottom two is our immigration simulation. This was a project-based learning opportunity for fourth grade students. I felt like this was probably the best example of project-based learning I've seen. This spanned every curricular area, every content area in the curriculum you could imagine. Students learned exactly what it was like to get their fare to America, arrive to Ellis Island, what they went through in Ellis Island. And the picture of the Italian immigrants in front of the Colosseum, that is our green screen technology in our tech club studio that we use, so we could actually put the homeland behind all of the students when presenting, so we incorporated technology at high levels as well. This event was excellent. It was absolutely my favorite event of the school year. And the reminder did a nice article on it last, last week. It was great.
It's a couple of school on the high percentages of Italian. I always love to see that statement, we know my child, the students said, I know who to go to if I have a problem. And all of them were in the high 80s or high 90s, which is wonderful and all that they feel they have a doubt about this building, no matter what building they're in, they can go if they have a problem. So cool, sick eight through five.
And then it came crashing down.
They get more cynical all the second years.
So for the first time ever, we did exit surveys with all three grades, which we were really excited we did. And we tailored the exit surveys to the grade, so we asked like grade-level appropriate questions. We do have the unsure button, so we got a lot of unsures, which are not on here. So I did put that at the bottom once I realized how it looked, that the opposite is not disagree. In a lot of cases, disagree was low, and I probably should have shown that. Well, for the first time ever, we got really good formative data from the students. And we did it in a way where they even selected what team they're on. So when teams get back, we'll be able to give each team, it was, I think it was 35 or 40 survey questions per grade, so we'll be able to really give teams information on how their students felt when they left, their experience this, this year. And then, so you can see the numbers there, I don't need to go necessarily through those. But then the other thing was Connor, who had to leave, really talked me into putting open-ended questions in the survey. And it was amazing the level of feedback we got from the kids in the open-ended questions. It might take half the summer to read through all of it, but some really good ideas and some really good feedback on how we can keep working. I would argue the most positive on that first one is the bottom. At the end of the day, if I can get our teachers to build positive relationships with students and for young adolescents to be reporting that they did that at an 87, a 69, and a 78%, that's, that's pretty strong. Culture picture is bottom left, Field Day. We did, for the second year in a row, three different Field Days, which was great. I'm so glad we have this up and running again. Top picture is, you know, technology was really new to us this year. We went from zero carts to three chrome carts this year. So it was great to just be walking around and see that in places. And then the bottom right is our tech ed class, where they build paper cars that run off wind and have races, so I was in courses to stumble into as well.
Dr. I got a question a little bit, I mean, I'm a little surprised by that statistic you showed because all five of us are in the community, and in different ways. And we hear really wonderful things about the climate of Burchfield Park. So I'm a little taken aback that, and most of the scores are pretty high if you look at them, but I mean, I guess I would, I mean, I guess, especially the top one, I mean, you still get 70%, 75% saying that, you know, that they, they know who to go to if they have a problem. The bottom part also about teachers trying to build a positive relationship. So within this, there's a lot of positive there. And what, I would ask you to look at your survey closer to see if the wording could be better. I'm just saying that, but what I'm hearing in the community about Burchfield Park, no school.
Oh, yeah, for sure, absolutely. And we, we'll look at it a lot closer, but when you think about the questions, like two out of three sixth graders felt comfortable going to the principal, the assistant principal, like with a problem. Like, that's a really high number of young adolescents saying they would go to an administrator. Even in eighth grade, that over half of them said they would actually come to an administrator. But that's a high, that's a, yeah, I mean, I would love to see these numbers be in the 80s and 90s, too. Also, just so you know, we asked two or three questions around each topic. So we asked them in like, like a negative way, in a positive way, and we combine them together. So it's not just as simple as like one question. Like, we try to hide the construct in like a, a young adolescent-level question. So, yeah, but again, first time we've done this.
But when you, when you compare young adolescents to three through five, there's going to be a huge difference in the way that they, the kids, just through the way they're growing, the way they approach things. So I don't think the data is all that bad. You, there are positives there because they, even as middle school, they still feel comfortable going to the principal, which you would see that in three through five, but you would see it starting to wane a little bit, in my opinion, as they progress through.
Yeah, I was happy with the administrator one. The top row, I'm happy with. I mean, basically, if you look at the top row, seven out of 10 young adolescents still looking for one of teachers.
Right.
But this is middle school, I mean, as a former high school person, I don't know why anybody wants to teach or be a young adolescent. So I just, you know, I mean, I think just a whole different, I mean, they don't even know what's going on with the middle school students, I mean, they just.
Well, they, I think they do because they're, they're getting.
No, but I think the unsure button is huge. I think especially in middle school. Before, it was fifth grade in my school that we're always clicking it, so I can only imagine.
But, and that's what I said, you know, but, but I still think that there's positives going on.
Well, there is, I just.
Because to Rich's point, we do hear it. We do hear all the good things. So I wouldn't consider that to be a huge pickup at all.
No, no.
Sorry, continue to revise, yes.
Well, not yet. Yeah, absolutely. And we want to continue to grow those numbers, even though unsure existed. I mean, this is still real data, and we surveyed 650 kids to get it, so we want to keep building it.
So we've been doing a survey for many years, and we try to cover a ton of different topics. This is just a sampling, but we do things like try to get a handle on how our kids do outside of school. So if they work, how many hours a week do they spend on homework? I mean, we, you've probably seen it before, but it's very comprehensive. So this is, and I couldn't share the open response because I think some of it was PG-13, maybe even rated R, some of the responses that we got from our students. So we deal with a whole different type of, kind of situation with the, with the surveys at the high school. It was really important for us this year, and by the way, the survey was created by our Principal's Advisory Committee. We kind of revised it this year. We really wanted to get an indication of how we were doing with our mission statement because we really have tried to make our mission statement a living, breathing thing in all we do and all our PD. It's always, everything's always connected back to that. I'm really proud that our students felt that the first, the number one thing they think that we do the best was striving for success, pushing them to be the best that they can be in all different areas. And super excited to see that honoring diversity came into second place because I feel like we have done so much in that area.
They had to choose like one, two, three.
They had to rank them. They had to rank them. So this is the ranking. Third place was engage in critical thinking, and then fourth place was learning collaboratively. And this, the survey, the senior survey and the underclassmen survey is done separately, so that question came up later, like we should probably put that on, so that's why you don't see it on grade 12. As you know, next year, we're starting an advisor-advisee program, so we really wanted to get some feedback from the kids in terms as what are some topics that are near and dear to your hearts? Kids really want to talk more about social media and how they react and interact on social media. So that's, when we come back from the summer, that's going to be our first one. We had a lot of comments on how to deal with peer pressure, tolerance and acceptance of others, drug and alcohol, and dating violence tied, so that is definitely an area that we want to touch next year in some of those, some of those sessions. Issues with sexual relations was, that was, actually, we had a column that was write-in. You could write in any topic. It was the number one topic that our students wanted to talk about, so whatever that means. So we'll figure it out. And then last place, mental illness. That was another big write-in, you know, kids wanted to, to talk about how it affects them, how it affects their friends, and how it affects their family. We've, we've adopted a program next year to kind of help us generate those conversations. So it's a video that's done by a famous skateboarder, so it's somebody that's kind of cool to them. And then it's going to have guided questions for the class to discuss with their teachers. So we're really looking forward to reporting out next year of how that goes. I think it's going to be really, really strong. It's going to be at least once a month to start, and then if it, if it does well, we might think to increase it. Another positive, I think, that came out of it is that I think that if you look at the data, our kids really feel challenged at the high school. That was a big plus for us. And then the question, if you need someone to talk to, 82% of the underclassmen felt that they had that person, and 90% of our seniors felt that they had at least one person that they could talk to, which I think for this age group is huge. So going to the next picture, I had to put Gronkowski out there because it was just so cool. And it was our most tweeted tweet of the year, too, so it was kind of neat to have in there. But I wanted to kind of highlight some of the things that we've been working on this year. You know, we're very, very focused next year in integrating more technology, and not just to have computers, but to increase the collaboration with the kids, the communication. That picture on the right is a picture taken out of our collaborative learning lab this year. And love going in there because anytime you go in there, you're going to see kids that are involved in rigorous conversations with each other, utilizing the technology as a resource. So as you can see here, that was a group of students that were given a guiding question in science class, and they had to work collaboratively to come up with a claim, supporting evidence. It's pretty comprehensive, so we're trying to increase those types of activities. Our library renovation is going really strong. Today, they knocked down windows, our glass and cabinets, and it's just, we're so excited because that's just going to be another place for our kids to collaborate and, and just have a place where they can go that's comfortable and encourages them to, to, to think and to learn. Our new schedule got approved really strongly this year, so we're very excited to see how that's going to generate any positives. Another thing I'm very thankful for, and thanks to Gordon and to Pam for helping high school get this off the ground, is our one-to-one initiative is finally going to happen for next year. We have 25 students right now who are going to be taking home a laptop from the, you know, from, throughout the school day, they can take it home. And they're going to be utilizing this in our Community Action Learning Class, which has really gotten some good feedback from the community. Last week, we sent out an email to all the town department chairs, just kind of letting them know that this class is going to be going on. Kids are probably going to start talking to you, would like you to be part of the panel presentations. And I almost heard from every single department chair, like, we're excited, and here are some questions and issues we want the kids to like think about. So it's going to be a great balance of, you know, getting the kids out in the community, getting them to learn different skills that they're going to require when they go to college, when they, you know, get out in the workforce, and then utilizing the technology. So really excited about that. Next year, our, our teachers are introducing a new component to their art class. We created a new Google Lab. They're going to be using iPhones and digital technology and integrating that into. They're gonna be using iPhones and digital technology and integrating that into art, which is gonna be utilized with our Chromebooks, so we're seeing a lot more technology in the electives as well. And there you have it. Great year at the high school.
We're collaborating with our DPW on the renovation project. Collaborating in problem solving.
Thank you, yes. Have to give a shout-out to DPW, they've been great.
Absolutely, they've been fantastic. That, we phased that so that it wasn't a hit to any one particular year budget, so we're working very closely with them, with the high school, with the high school librarian to make this happen.
Now, on that, are there still gonna be some quiet areas or quiet rooms where students can just sit and read or have some quiet downtime?
Yes and no. So one of the things that we did is they're installing it this week, you know, where the computer lab is in the back and it meets the library? There's a glass door that's gonna separate those two rooms, so that, you know, it kind of keeps the library a little bit more quiet. Really, the noise comes from the lab pieces, because that's where the teachers are teaching. But, you know, most libraries right now are big, open spaces, we're gonna have lounge areas for kids to just, you know, kind of work on projects together, which is something we have, we don't have a lot of those spaces at the high school. We're really limited.
But even in the newer designs, they're not libraries anymore. They're medias, they're like media centers.
They're wide open, larger spaces.
Yeah, wide open, there aren't those, what you think of as, in terms of a traditional library.
And we're really limited square footage in the library, too.
Right, oh, yeah.
There's not really a whole lot of quiet corners.
So the collaborative piece, the ability to problem-solve together, we'll be able to handle that. The technology piece, we're still working on, but it goes back to, say, our electrical system being at capacity. And so that's, again, we're working very closely with DPW.
IT has also been really great, too.
That's right, that's a good point. IT has been with us all the way through, and what do you, and sad to say this, but what do you literally unplug?
Right.
In order to plug in something else? And so we're going through that and seeing what makes sense, what maybe we can unplug, so that we can make that space better.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe just have another couple hours worth of work.
Yeah, we're gonna keep going. Okay, moving right along. Go ahead.
Can we just move to accept?
Yeah.
I move to accept the benefit, the donation of a hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
All right. It's gonna go right to it.
I'm a top of the job, A-plus school reward program.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept the donation of fifty dollars from Atari Take Charge for Education for Burson Park.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move that we accept the seven hundred and fifty-five dollars from Elementary Music Night. It's a donation from the Elementary Music Night on June eighth from Meadowbrook. Is there more to that?
Are the other schools gonna pass?
Or is it self-explanatory?
There's other schools that will be coming in as well, but I don't know if you wanna add anything?
No, no.
No.
Ticket sales, seventy-five.
Yes, exactly. This is the way the outside auditors want it handled. It goes into the gift account. That's appropriate.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Hear that? Okay, moving along to old business, six-point, item six, six-point-one, the superintendent's summative evaluation. This was kind of difficult, because we did our mid-cycle seven weeks ago, so there wasn't a whole lot of substance to add. So I will quickly go through what I got from everybody, and I thank everybody for, for submitting. Under progress towards student learning goals, everything that I, that I added is highlighted in red. The district continues to make progress. There were increases in the aggregate CPI in both ELA and mathematics. There's also good success in park. The district continues to align with the mass state standards. Progress towards professional practice goals. A collaborative, a collaborative effort was used to choose Mastery Connect as our software package. Both programs were piloted before a choice was made. Moving along to Smart Goal Three, which is, yeah, continue to build relationships with other town departments. This will be critical moving forward with the change in form of town government taking place on July first. Instructional leadership. The superintendent has worked effectively with the software pilot committee, is also involved in the MIAA, and works in collaboration with the LPVDC districts. His leadership has also led to great progress, as seen from the longitudinal data form from the past few years. Under management and operations, the district continues to run smoothly. The superintendent and leadership team continue to make our school district a safe and great learning environment. Moving along to family and community engagement, the superintendent continues to be highly visible in the community. This, again, will be important as we move forward. Professional culture, the superintendent continues to demonstrate the professional culture in the examples he sets, expanding the East Long Meadow Public Schools' learning walks and working ELPS assessment, working with the ELPS Assessment Software Pilot Committee. And just in a, in a short summary, in reviewing the superintendent's summative evaluation report from two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, the East Long Meadow Public School system is continuing to make effective progress on a number of initiatives. The superintendent continues to focus his efforts on the students. He also continues to make efforts to increase technology for all students. This is important as we move, move forward. The superintendent will also need to continue to work with other town department heads and establish relationships with the new town council to make sure they're, they understand our needs going forward.
Well done, Mr. Fonseca.
Yes, very nice. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, very well done.
It's a cumulative effort.
It is.
There's no way that I can be effective in my job without all of you and without the entire school system, as you've said a few times, other town departments and agencies that continue to support us.
And I think, you know, we see that as, you know, a need to continue to grow as we go forward, so, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, item seven-point-one, the MAS-CMA.
You have to vote in there?
Yeah.
I think you have to vote to accept.
I'm sorry.
I move to accept the superintendent's summative evaluation for school year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I apologize for that. Okay, item seven-point-one, under new business, MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference Early Bird Registration. In your packet, and I received this in the mail, MAS-C always offers early registration, an early registration window for the annual conference in Hyannis. It'll be, the deadline is on or before July fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I plan on going. I'll reach out to Beth and see what her plans are. I'm not sure if anybody else is gonna be interested or not, and we'll go forward. If anybody ever has any questions on that, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item seven-point-two, East Long Meadow Tennis Association Request for Bulletin Board at the Tennis Courts.
Hey, in your informational packet, you have a letter from Karen Fotherup Myers, who's secretary and board member of the East Long Meadow Tennis Association. And if you remember, Karen also was part of the steering committee as we started to put together that capital project to renovate the tennis courts. The request is twofold, one of which is relatively easy. Right now, you have smaller rule sign, tennis court rules posted on each of the doors. They are provided by the original contractor, and it does make sense to now put up something that's a little bit more permanent, similar to what we do in the athletic stadium, that just states the rules so that people can see them very clearly on any of the entrances to the tennis courts. That's the second part of the request, and that's something that we can, I've already had discussions with our DPW, did the signs for our athletic stadium. If that's something that they feel they no longer can do, we can then reach out. I know that the East Long Meadow Tennis Association has spoken to Spotlight Graphics. We also have done work with Hamden, is it Hamden Graphics or Hamden Sign?
Hamden Sign, yeah.
And they do nice work as well. So we can, that's something I, I think would make sense, and certainly we do with our other facilities.
So you'll be working with the DPW, correct?
I would work with DPW. If that's something that they feel they no longer, they're no longer in the sign business, per se, then, you know, we would reach out to some of the other companies that we've used before. And that's making the rules a little bit more prominent and clearer for all individuals who use the tennis courts. We've experienced some people, weekends mostly, when tennis courts are not in use, who have done some skateboarding and so forth, and even though the signs say, no skateboard, it'd be good to post that clear. The second request, or actually, the first request in the letter, is a request from the tennis association to put up a protected, all-weather bulletin board on which we can post programs such as the recreation department tennis clinics that are going on, go on throughout the summer and the fall, as well as when high school team practices happen, when rec tennis programs are happening. More information so that people who are coming by may want to use the courts, they know when the courts are in use, when the courts may be free for other citizens to use, as well as just advertising and increasing the sport of tennis. I think that's the goal, is, from the tennis association, is they have these...
Or promoting, not advertising.
Rob, sorry. Promoting, promoting the sport of tennis as a lifelong sport, if you will. I have not had extensive conversations with Karen or other members of the East Long Meadow Tennis Association, but I think they certainly would respect the fact that, right now, the school committee does not look to advertise companies, either in the athletic stadium or the gymnasium, and therefore, I'm assuming that would also apply to the tennis courts. So we would have to make that clear, if that's the committee's wishes, that nothing but current tennis programming and, you know, expansion of tennis as a lifelong sport.
Has the high school administration, Athletic Director, waited on this?
They have not. I can certainly get their recommendation.
I would definitely be interested in hearing about it. I think it's a unique situation. We don't have other sports that currently do this, correct? We don't have.
No, no.
I also think it's one of these areas right now where we have that crossover. It's not like people are coming to use the football field for their own use, but with the tennis, we are using it, opening it up to the community to use, at times we're not, and it can be confusing as to, okay, do you think if I go there now, I'd be able to use the tennis courts? Is it okay? I think it might help eliminate some of those questions, but I'd really be interested to hear what the high school staff would have to say about it first.
I agree with that.
Well, isn't that solved those by simply staying, making it time that those courts are available on a daily basis?
But how, where do you post that, or where do you average, you know, show that?
Yeah, but it shouldn't be more general than specific. My issue is, with this, I don't, I don't see how they could ever schedule when the courts will be available and not available by a, a piece of paper locked up in a glass cupboard.
Okay.
I think it must, much more, you know, the courts are open to the public after four, from four PM to dusk, or so, I don't know what the rule is.
I mean, the only thing that they could post is when the matches are. Like, let's say there's an high school match.
We'd have to post our varsity schedules.
Yeah, that's what, that's...
The spring season would be when you would have...
No, well, they're after school.
Yeah, after school.
And they can go into the...
Right, so they're either practice, or they have a match, right? So they're not available probably before...
Before four o'clock.
Four o'clock, or whatever the time is.
Yeah.
So if that's the issue, we just make it a general rule, it's open to the public from four PM till dusk. I don't know that we can keep this up to date, is the only thing, because I think we're, we're all much more online than ever before.
Oh, my understanding, too, was that it was the tennis club that would want to keep that up to date.
It is a test. It is a test. So I don't know how they're gonna coordinate with the school and the rec to keep it updated, too. So other than that, it just becomes outdated information, and is everybody gonna read it? Anyway, I appreciate the effort, but is there something they can accomplish online?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yep, that's exactly it.
We could even post, you know, if we came into a consensus, you know, for schedule updates, go here.
I think you're, certainly, you're hitting a very valid point. Communication of rec programs, I'm sure, are well documented on the rec website.
Correct.
We have our schedule. This would be in addition to.
Right, but I don't know if it's, the intent is to advertise other programs, not necessarily, or not advertise, but post for other programs, not necessarily school-specific. And that's what I'm afraid that intent is. And that, I think, approaches the gray area of advertising. Because of our advertising policy, what is to preclude somebody from saying, this is sponsored by so-and-so, and where it's not really advertising, but it's running up, right up against it?
Right.
And that's where I have a concern with this.
Right, and then we have to be approving everything that gets posted.
We have to be approving everything, and that is...
Or even someone who wants to give private tennis lessons to post inside that. Well, but you could, well, we don't have the key, you know, that's my point, though.
But we don't have the key, so I, it's, it's what they wanna put in there.
I don't think we're ready for this.
Not school-specific, and I don't think we're ready for it.
Yeah. They need to come up with their own, like, electronic bulletin board.
Yeah, or just the website. We'll post the website. East Long Meadow Tennis. It's for, more information, go to ELtest.org, or whatever it is. I think we could certainly be accommodating, accommodating something like that.
Well, I think we can.
I think we can. But not something like this.
Would you like to take them separately, in terms of the rules?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Posting the rule sign and whatever you may be thinking in terms of a motion for the bulletin board?
Well, we have, yeah, we have to, because I think we're in agreement that the rules should be posted.
They're not posted adequately now.
They're not.
Right now, you have the original manufacturer's sign, and they're small, they're blue. It'd be nice to make it white, maybe put the Spartan, as they showed in their drawing on it, and make them a little bit larger so that it's clear, here's the expectation as you come out of the courts.
Who creates the rules?
Basically, I think they've provided some recommendations, but we would work with our athletic director, high school administration, and we have models of what we already have in place in the athletic stadium.
Cool.
So some of the keys are obviously proper footwear, and what these tennis courts are intended for, and what it's not intended for.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the request, or do I have a motion on the East Long Meadow Tennis Association request?
Which one?
For the bulletin board. Because it has to be made in a positive.
I'd make a motion that we approve the all-weather bulletin board for the tennis association.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, the motion, the request fails. Now, can I have a motion on the request for the rules, the sign, the, the rule sign?
I make, I make a motion that the school department purchase and install rule signs, working with the DPW.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion on that one?